Call the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all members are present. Approval of the agenda. Presented. Have any changes?
I have a request for an add for item seven U. It's a request for a transfer of a liquor license.
Okay. We have a request for another transfer of liquor license. Does the council want to hear that? We just received it on Monday. Not all paperwork is turned in.
Yes, it's not all in here, but there's not much of it.
Okay, that's up to the council. Do you want to do a contingent on receiving it?
I mean, we can hear it, I think. If the paperwork's in, if it affects us locally, I think we should try to move it to their benefit.
Okay. One thing is, by the time we do get the paperwork and we send it to the state, it might not... A statement has thirty days.
Well, let's...
So...
Yeah, let's leave it on, even if we don't take action, we can discuss it.
Okay.
Okay. So then that would be, we'll put that on, it'd be seven.
U.
U. Okay, is there any other?
I just had a couple revised staff reports that were out here.
Right, yeah. Seven B and seven E, the revised staff reports are in front of you. Any other changes, council? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with that addition?
So moved.
You have a motion by Dave, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes of the December 4th, 2019 regular meeting. All have them in your packet. Have any questions, concerns? Corrections? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the December 4th, 2019 regular meeting?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Dave, second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. This now brings us to our public open forum. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Call a third time, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Seeing no one, our public open forum is closed. We have no public hearings. Then bring us to reports and presentations. Police Department Monthly Report, Brian.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Activity report for November 2019. Some of the numbers we had for that month. We had seventeen alarm calls. We did twenty-seven assists for persons. We did seventy assists for businesses. We did thirty-four assists for other agencies. We had sixty-nine, uh, excuse me, sixteen citizen contact calls. We made two felony arrests for warrants. We had twenty-seven matter of information calls. We had thirty-two medicals. We gave five citations for no Minnesota driver's licenses. We had nine traffic accidents. We patrolled at the school twenty-five times. Did some patrolling at Walmart fifty-seven times. We had suspicious, twenty-seven suspicious calls. We had eight thefts. We did twelve welfare checks. And we gave out a hundred and seventy-five verbal warnings for the month. So that, compare that to October. We were up calls by fifty-five. Gave fifty-seven more warnings than we did in October, and so we're up a total of a hundred and twelve. Compare that to 2018, we're up a one-hundred calls. We are down on warnings by forty-eight. So a total of fifty-two, so pretty comparable. Other than that, our new K-9 squad, which was supposed to be here on June or whatever it was early this year, but Ford Motor Company couldn't get them out, so we just got it here in December, and we'll be putting, switching the equipment over. And the other thing, the mentions on that squad are different from the last Explorer, so we have to get some of the new equipment to fit in that, unfortunately. So we'll be doing that here now this next couple of weeks, getting that switched over, so.
Okay. I seen it the other day on the road, it's pretty sharp looking.
Yeah, all black right now. We'll get probably some graphics on it.
Okay.
So, it's on the way.
Any other questions for Brian? Thank you.
Thank you.
Six B, Public Works Department, Ben.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The past month, we've had several snowstorms, which we've been cleaning up and hauling snow from. We've trimmed some low hanging trees on roadways that were in the way of some of our plow equipment. We installed all the holiday lights in the park and on the streets, in the streetlights. The outdoor rink is currently flooded. The figure skating rink should be open by the weekend. And the hockey rink has the liner installed. It's been installed for nine days now. But the temperatures with that little bit of snow cover that was on top hasn't allowed it to freeze all the way to the bottom. It's about four and a half, five inches thick of water. It's about half frozen right now, so I'm hopeful by the weekend that it freezes the rest of the way. But until it's frozen all the way, we can't get out there with any sort of equipment or the Zamboni to smooth it out and get it ready for people to skate. But I'm hoping that this weekend it's ready to go. But the figure skating rink should be open by this weekend, that's been going well. We've had some minor repairs to the plow equipment after those couple events that we had. Last week, we had a representative from the Minnesota Department of Agriculture, they were in town. They wanted to do a survey looking for additional signs of Emerald Ash Bore, hoping to host a class here if they found something that was bad enough that they could be a good example for people to look at. Good news is, he didn't find anything that was severely infested enough that would be beneficial for a class. He did see a couple trees that we had suspected had EAB, but it was pretty minor and it was kind of in that area where we had taken all those trees out this spring. So that's good news. Doesn't mean it's not here anymore, we still have to deal with it, but at least it's not spreading rapidly. And we still intend to be proactive and continue to take down ash trees over the course of the winter and over the next few years, just to stay ahead of this, so we don't have a big issue again like we did this spring. The streetlight LED project that we've been working on this past year, so far, about three hundred LED lights have been changed. Just in a comparison for you, November 2019 usage is ten thousand kilowatts less than the November 2018 usage, which is eight hundred sixty dollars less in billing from the prior year. This savings is not for the entire three hundred lights, it's probably more like two hundred lights. They didn't have the three hundred lights in by the November timeframe. But that savings is going to continue to increase as we get closer to replacing all six hundred lights. So they're hoping by March to have all the lights upgraded in town. And then out at the airport, we've been just cleaning the snow around the hangars and the lights on the runway and keeping everything open and cleaned up and obstruction free out there.
Okay, questions, comments? So you're going to be cutting down trees when the weather's decent enough to do it?
Right, when it's not snowing and we have to deal with snow, then we'll be out cutting, yep.
Okay, sounds good.
Yep.
Thank you, Ben.
Thanks.
Seven A, approved resolution 2019 dash one oh six, authorizing inter-fund transfers.
As you know, at the end of every year, we do inter-fund transfers. And you do have the detailed list in front of you and what they're for. What this does is transfers the fire department share of the city hall bond fund to the bond fund from the fire department. We try to transfer stormwater fees to the bond fund, that was for the Forts and Getty project. We transfer future equipment purchase to the sinking fund, but then we also had current year purchases brought back from the sinking fund. So it's all detailed in there, like we bought the Toolcat this year and some other things, so the money came into the fund. It transfers the apartment complex abatement to the EDA. Recall that that's a nine-year project that the city's capture tax on the apartment complex comes back to the EDA. It transferred the small city dollars to the general fund because we had used those dollars for crack filling and mill and overlay this year. It processes the loan repayment to the general fund for the ambulance garage and also for the fire pumper. This is the last year of those inter-fund loans, so they are now paid in full. And then we also are closing various capital project funds. Those project funds that we're closing is the runway project, the airport entrance road, and the Getty Street Project Fund, and then earlier this year was the Kate's Estates Project Fund. So the grand total of all these inter-fund transfers is seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty-four cents. We do have on the airport, of the project funds that we're closing, there may be some interest, some minor dollar amount of interest that may post and change those final amounts as we close out the year. But those, this would be the resolution that we're asking you now, and if that does change, we'll come back at a later date and inform you what that amount was. So we're looking to approve resolution 2019 dash one oh six, approving these inter-fund transfers.
Questions, comments? It's a year-end thing that we've done for years. Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2019 dash one oh six?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven B, approved resolution 2019 dash one oh seven, accepting quote for skid loader.
So you do have a revised staff report for this, number seven B? On December 4th, you approved by resolution 2019 dash one oh one, authorizing quotes for the purchase of a skid loader. The estimated cost was going to be about thirty-five thousand dollars after trade. We did get estimates from Midwest Machinery and Farm Right, one for the John Deere skid loader and one for a Bobcat. And they came in at about thirty-five hundred dollars less for the Bobcat. However, Midwest Machinery submitted a revised quote, and so their new net quote is thirty thousand nine sixty versus the Bobcat quote of thirty thousand oh thirty-four. We're within that thousand-dollar margin where the city council sometimes makes a decision to buy local for that cost. And because, there's a couple reasons, I think, that staff would like to do the John Deere. One of those is local parts right here in town. Number one, they're a big taxpayer in town, of course. But also, if our, if it breaks down, they give us one to use for free. So there's a couple reasons why we would like you to consider. We understand we're, you know, about nine hundred and thirty dollars more than the Bobcat, but there are some justifiable reasons to go with the John Deere. Ben might have more information if you have questions regarding that, but that's something we would like you to consider.
Okay. Questions, concerns?
Do we have any guidelines on prices, local versus outside?
We don't have, like, we don't have written guidelines on that. We have, we have on our purchasing, you have, you should go with a low bidder unless you have some compelling reason not to. And in past purchases, the council, like in buying a vehicle, you might go to John Wees Ford rather than going to Minneapolis because it's, you know...
Yeah, well, I just wondered if we had...
And so we've kind of kept that thousand-dollar margin.
Okay.
So I would say that's a past practice more than it is a policy.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? Personally, I think the original intent of the going for out to get a new skid loader is so all our attachments would work on either or.
Yep.
Toolcat or a Bobcat. And yeah, to go out and get a loner instead of using, you know, we could probably hook... If we got a Bobcat skid loader and we got the Toolcat, we can have two pieces of equipment working at the same time rather than having to, you know, have it sitting there because we only have that one unit again. If it does break down and we can go get a loner, being around some of the implement businesses that I've been around, some of the loners are probably not the greatest shape in the world and with some of the abuse that they take because they are loners could cause us more issues. That's just a personal opinion, I'll stand by that by myself. But that's, to me, that we should actually go with the equipment that we have, all our attachments that will fit, rather than, that's part of the reason why we want to get rid of the gale.
Yeah.
Was because we couldn't use it on anything we had for the Toolcat.
And some of that was usability and stuff of the controls and stuff, so...
But then to turn around and do another off-brand from what we've got is, could possibly put us back in the same thing.
I just asked Ben, and the attachments are interchangeable with either, either unit.
With Bobcat and John Deere?
Yeah, with the QuickTatch.
Yeah, so then the Bobcat snow blower would have a wire harness with the opposed to the John Deere skid loader. That's the only difference. So Bobcat snow blower will hook right up to a Bobcat skid loader. A Bobcat snow blower needs a second wiring harness on it in order to hook to a John Deere skid loader. So that's the only difference between the two. But then you could take any John Deere skid loader and hook up to it. And you could also still take the Toolcat and hook up to it, or any Bobcat skid loader and hook up to it because it would have both connections on it, on the snow blower or the sweeper.
So is that electrical harness, is that something extra that we're going to have to have sitting there just in case?
That's in this price.
That's in this price?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, in the John Deere price.
So you, you have no preference one way or the other?
They're both very comparable machines. Specs-wise, they're essentially the same within five percent of each other on every line item that you look at. So I, both pieces of equipment would work well in our department.
Okay.
I guess I don't...
Even, even things like dashboard layouts, that kind of stuff that just, you have to remember which is which?
They're both very similar, and we operated both of them, and neither of them stood out superior to one or another. They'll both work well for us, it's just the, you know, the local service and local parts is the consideration in this discussion, I guess.
So on handling and everything, when we tested both of them, basically, there was no preference over one over the other with the guys?
Nothing stand out, you know, minor, minor personal preference on very small things, but no one said I would, no one said they'd be unhappy with either or, they said they'd be happy with either one. So either way, it would be a good, a good thing. Either one is going to work well for us, yes.
Okay. Comments, concerns?
Well, I think as Ben highlighted, he says the, you know, the functionality work between the two machines, and I think the local component and local service, I think is, I think a benefit for, for us. So I would probably lean towards the Midwest Machinery personally.
Yeah, I was just going to, you know, just to clarify. So what we're really looking at is, the Bobcat is a little bit less, the John Deere is local. Does that pretty much sum it up?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm basically waiting to see if someone wants to make a motion.
I know.
To me, the price difference, taxpayer money is nine hundred dollars more, whether it's local or not. You know? And nothing against Midwest Machinery, but they're not exactly just a local business, they're, they're covering half the state, so...
They just happen to be more of a location, so, yeah, they, all right.
You know, compared to Farm Right, I know they're all over this thing too, but it's eighteen miles difference.
You know, it's nine hundred dollars of taxpayer money, I think you're right. I'll make a motion that we go with the low bid.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion by Dave to go with the Bobcat S650 from Farm Right for thirty thousand, thirty-four dollars and forty-one cents. Second by Diane. Any more comments or questions? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, four in favor, one against. Seven C, approved resolution 2019 dash one oh eight, accepting quote for four-in-one hydraulic blade.
This is another one of the purchases that you had approved at the last, or December 4th city council meeting, authorizing public works staff to solicit quotes for a four-in-one blade for our payloader. The estimated cost was twenty-five thousand dollars. And you can see there's a wide swing of the, of the, of the four-in-one blades that we got quotes from, ranging from twenty-one thousand, two thirty-one, from Nuss Truck, up to thirty-nine thousand, seven eighty-five, which is a max pro. The loader actually was purchased from Nuss Truck, and I believe they really wanted to sell us the attachments for it and why they really were competitive on the bid. So we are looking to approve resolution 2019 dash one oh eight, accepting the quote for the four-in-one blade for Nuss Truck for twenty-one thousand, two thirty-one.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2019 dash one oh eight, accepting the quote for the four-in-one blade from Nuss Truck for twenty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven D, approved resolution 2019 dash one oh nine, accepting quote for turnout gear.
This is the, in December, December 4th meeting, you approved resolution 2019 dash one oh three, authorizing the solicitation of quotes for turnout gear for the fire department. This consists of pants and coats for an estimated cost of sixty-five thousand. This will be a 2020 purchase. But if we could order them before the end of the year, we would get the 2019 price, if you recall that that was our discussion. So we received quotes for the proposed purchase from Great Plains and from Alex Air Apparatus. Great Plains quoted us for sixty-three, seven fifty, and Alex Air from Seventy for seventy thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. So Chief Morse is requesting we approve purchase of the coats and pants from Great Plains as the low bidder. The total purchase of sixty-three, seven fifty was less than we had actually budgeted of sixty-five thousand, so that's good news. So we're looking to approve resolution 2019 dash one oh nine, accepting the quotes for the turnout gear.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve the resolution 2019 dash one oh nine, accepting the quotes for turnout gear from Great Plains?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven E, approved resolution 2019 dash ninety-nine, accepting quote for power cot.
And you do have a revised staff report on your table tonight because we did work on the numbers a little bit. The 2019 ambulance budget include the purchase of a new self-loading power cot. Ambulance Director Kathy Stuford, she's requesting to proceed with the purchase. We did two quotes, we did receive two quotes for new equipment, and then we also had an option of retrofitting an existing cot, was also evaluated. But we, they're recommending to discard that because for the little bit of savings, you still have an old cart. And so that equipment, the retrofit of the old cart was thirty-one thousand, one thirty-four. The two new ones, one was from PSV for a Stryker cart of forty thousand, eight seventeen, and the INX was a new one from Fernal for forty thousand, one ninety. And these are different than the numbers I previously gave you in the packet because we were able to kind of drill down a little bit on the numbers to make sure installation was included and that they had the right trays, so they were really an apples-to-apples comparison. So that's what you have in front of you now between the Stryker and the INX. So what we're requesting to do is approve resolution 2019 dash ninety-nine, authorizing the purchase of the self-loading cot, and it would be the INX from Fernal for forty thousand, one ninety.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2019 dash ninety-nine, to purchase the self-loading cot from INX?
Motion to approve.
Motion from Dave, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe.
One clarification, the resolution I'm looking at, this price not exactly the same. The amount listed up on the quote is forty thousand, one ninety, ninety-six, and down in the text it says one ninety-six, ninety-six.
Oh, down there, I see it. I'll fix that, thank you.
Is it one ninety then?
It's one ninety.
Okay.
Not one nine zero.
Good catch, Heidi. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve resolution 2019 dash ninety-nine. Is there any other comments? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven F, approved road closures and use of park for snowmobile events.
So, you know, at the prior meeting, Pam Borgman was here, and she outlined various events to occur in the park the weekend of December 28th and January 4th. This is called the Snowdown Racing Festival. It's ice oval and central Minnesota pond racing, along with the snow cleats are having this activity. The event will take place on the lake. They were out today or yesterday, and they drilled and out where the races are going to occur. There's currently thirteen inches of ice, closer to shore, there's six, so we're hoping that that will freeze up more. They did send their application to Stearns County Sheriff's Office for that permit. So the DNR and the sheriffs get to decide whether this event will occur. So it's not a decision we make, it's something that they make. So the request of the city is for the assistance of the Public Works Department in setting up snow fence and barricades, plowing the ban shell and boat marina parking lots, along with the top area of the campground for trailer parking. And they're requesting making Park Road a one-way for crowd control and approval of the fence, to fence off the park from the pier to the boat access, and then to leave that fence up for the week because then the following week on the 4th, there's another event. So that, and then I talked to her today, and there's a couple other, we're looking for additional areas that can be opened up for parking because they probably won't be parking on the lake, which normally occurs. They are expecting about eight hundred people for this event, so there'll be quite a bit of activity going on down there. So we're looking at whether there's room down by the community garden, whether the impound lot, some other areas that we can open up for their parking. And then possibly if she has to arrange shuttles or something, but... So, but right now, the, we're not organizing it, the CDB is working on it, but really the snowdown event, they're actually the ones that are doing it. So what we're looking for from the council is just approval of the use of the park and the closure of Park Road as requested.
Comments, concerns? Do I have a motion to approve the use of park and closure of Park Road as requested?
I'll second.
Motion by Heidi. Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven G, approved resolution 2019 dash one ten, establishing 2020 administrative fee schedule.
This is the fee schedule that you look at every year. The first, the first part is administrative fees, and there are some recommended changes. The Airport Board is recommending to remove the month-to-month rental at the tee hangars, and that was really for somebody that just wanted to come like for one month and not, not have a lease. And so they're just going to remove that because that's not been popular. And then they're also going to remove the new tenant two-months free rent if signing a lease rent. So they're removing that, and they're just going to stick with the one hundred or one month free if you pay for a full year in advance. So that's the changes at the airport. There's multiple equipment charge changes in the Public Works Department. We don't rent the equipment out, but we have to have the different charges in case we ever have to be reimbursed for its use, like by a FEMA grant or something, you can look through those. Those are mostly like wheel loader with bucket, including the operator, what's our going rate for that? So those numbers, you can look those on your time. The street openings, we're looking at increasing that to three thousand dollars because two thousand dollars generally isn't enough to put a street back after someone rips it open. And of course, somebody put that deposit down and they get it back once they put it back together. If they don't, we use the money to do that. In the, in the park, recommending the use of the shelters, go to forty dollars for a day, like Sinclair Lewis Park Shelter, if you wanted to rent that for the day for a family reunion. And then also, the Tower View Ball Field Facilities rentals for tournaments. Having a damage deposit changed, JC Park rental for tournaments would go from thirty dollars to thirty-five. School use of the ball fields go from thirty to forty, so they're kind of nominal changes. The campground, the park board recommended weeknight, week, or Friday and Saturday nights go from thirty to thirty-five dollars. And then, then the, then during the week rate would stay the same. And the Labor Day, Labor Day rate would go up to twenty from fifteen, and then of course, the week lease calculate off of that. At the arena, the staffing charge would go from forty to sixty dollars an hour if... At the arena, the staffing charge would go from forty to sixty dollars an hour if we have to staff an event. Normally that ends up being at an overtime rate, so we want to cover our costs. And the rent of the mezzanine would go up to one-ten. Open skating would go to five dollars. The youth hockey association and high school, they have their rate, I believe it's a hundred and ten dollars, but then other groups would be one sixty. And figure skating would go to eighty dollars. And then also the recreational adult hockey is, is ten dollars a time or a hundred and twenty for the season. Let's see, the other changes were at the ambulance. The additional patients sitting on a bench, or no, emergency versus non-emergency goes to eight hundred. Mileage per loaded mile, fourteen dollars. B L S transfer, eight hundred. B L S non-emergency, eight hundred. Advanced life support with the nurse goes up to eleven ninety, because then we pay for that nurse. And again, the loaded mile would go to fourteen, so some small changes in the ambulance department. So every, every department looked really close at the fee schedule this year, just to make sure we're in line with what our costs are. And so now we're looking to adopt the resolution two thousand nineteen dash one-ten, adopting these administrative fees.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve resolution number two thousand nineteen dash one-ten, adopting the twenty-twenty fee schedule for administrative user fees?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Any last minute concerns, questions? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven H, approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash one-eleven, establishing twenty-twenty schedule of penalties.
The second part of our fees are penalties and this is a separate resolution than the fees, this is for like alcohol violations, permit violations, campground violations, animal impounding. We did go through that and we have no recommendation for change for this year. But you still do need to adopt the new resolution to keep it the same. So we're looking at resolution two thousand nineteen dash one-eleven, adopting the schedule of offenses and voluntary administrative penalties.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash one-eleven?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven I, approve ordinance seven ninety-four, establishing twenty-twenty fee schedule for licenses slash permits.
So this, this is for license permits and services, this would be things like liquor license, garbage licenses, but the one change that we are recommending this year is for the building fees, so the building code licenses, and the planning commission reviewed this. And we had the nineteen eighty fees we used until two thousand thirteen and then we updated to the nineteen ninety-four fees. So now we are looking to update to the nineteen ninety-seven fees for our building code. And I believe at the planning commission, they looked at comparing that to what an increase would mean to the price of a house and for construction, and they came back with the recommendation to go to that nineteen ninety-seven building code fee. And that is the only recommendation we have for changes of license permits and services, and that is ordinance seven ninety-four.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve ordinance number seven ninety-four?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven J, approve ordinance seven ninety-five, authorizing summary publication of ordinance.
And this ordinance is simply allowing us to publish a summary rather than the, the entire fee schedule in the paper. So that is ordinance number seven ninety-five, that authorizes the summary publication reaffirming the fees for city licenses and permits.
Questions about that? Otherwise I'll look for a motion to approve ordinance seven ninety-five, authorizing the summary publication of ordinance seven ninety-four.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven K, approve E M T advancements.
Kathy Stroopfert has the following E M T advancement recommendations and I do have her letters of recommendation in the packet that I'm sure you've read through. The first one is Tim DeVal, she's recommending he go from probationary E M T to an E M T B level one, effective December eighteenth, which is today, and then Jackie Ostendorf, probationary E M T effective upon successive passage of the practical testing and written exam. So as you can see, they've, they've, like Tim has done more patient contacts than is required and is proven to be a very good asset to the department. And then Jackie is well on her way as well. So we are recommending to advan, approve the E M T advancements as presented.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve the E M T advancements as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven L, accept resignation.
David Belkey has submitted his notification of retirement, which will be effective with the end of this year, December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. He has been working for the city since June fourteenth of nineteen eighty-two. So you think about that, that's thirty-seven and a half years that he's been with the city. So he has been with the Public Works Department, the Parks Department since that time. I think one time he told me he made like two dollars and something an hour when he started for the city. So it's been a long, long haul and he has his motor home and they're going to do some traveling and kind of enjoy life a little bit, so we really wish him well. It's going to take a lot of knowledge out the door with him, so I hope Ben absorbed all that in the one year that he's been here. So we'll, we'll see how that goes and if you wish to send him off with well wishes, he's having a little, his wife is hosting a little open house for him at the next door bar Friday night, af- after four o'clock, so you can feel free to stop in. So we are looking to accept the retirement notification for David Belkey, effective December thirty-first.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against, and good luck to Dave in the future. Seven M, approve board appointments.
So we have nominations for various board and commission openings and you should consider each of the following. And I believe the mayor, you have removed, we have reviewed them all and spoke to the ones that you needed to speak with. So I don't know if you want to go through them, if you want me to read through it and then you can give your recommendation or how you want to handle that.
Basically, there's only one position or one unit, the Public Utilities Commission, that we have more people than openings. So for the park board, I've met and talked with Logan Gruber. I would recommend that he would be at the park board position. We got two positions open for the planning commission, only one person put their name back in as Linda Reagan. I would recommend putting Linda back in. Public Utilities Commission, we have three people for two positions. This one here was a little tough, but my recommendation would be John Egan and Wayne Sense. Senior Center Board, we've got four members, but three people applying. Deb Johnson, Nancy Kazlakis and Ken Ritter to be appointed to that board. Convention Visitors Bureau, or Visitsoc Center Board. Asmeeda Amin and Stacy Michaels have put their names in, I recommend that both of them be put in. E D A Board, it'd be just one position, that would be B J Welly. And I recommend that he would be put in. Airport Commission, two positions open, Tom Winker and Mike Bichard Junior have both put their names in. I recommend that they be put back on. And for the Center Care Soc Center Board, Tim Borgman is the one person that put his name back in and I recommend that he puts his, or we put him back into his position. Those are my recommendations. Any comments, concerns from the council? I know with the Public Utilities Commission, at one point, there was concern about Wayne working for Stearns Electric, but all the Public Utilities meetings are public meetings. So basically, I don't think there's any secrets out there that there's anything he could possibly be. And though I respect all the years that Dave has put in the board, I think it's time to get some new blood and move things on a little bit. So that's the reason why I made those recommendations, so. Anyone else has anything to add to that? I'll be looking for a motion to accept those appointments to those boards.
In terms of the Public Utilities Commission, do we have a council representative that never sits on that?
No.
So right now we're just, so they would be just in both roles, just because.
Right, yeah. That's one of the things that in the future I would like to see, basically starting next month, having the Utilities Commission send a representative. Maybe Debbie shows up once every three months and gives us a report of what's going on. Because unless we call a joint meeting, we have no idea or attend a meeting ourselves, so.
So obviously having a council representative who's in that role as a citizen as well is valuable, that knowledge that he can bring back to our council meetings as we, you know, look at issues that do relate to the public utilities.
So.
I want to clarify one thing. It's my understanding that because I sit on the city council, if I am appointed, it needs to be unanimous. That was the opinion of the lawyer some years ago.
If you...
The, the opinion of our city lawyer was that if the council appoints a member of the council to one of these boards, the decision needs to be unanimous.
It's, it's a super majority.
Hmm?
A super majority, which is four fifths.
Okay, well, the, the lawyer's opinion was unanimous.
Okay, well, I guess I'll defer to the lawyer then, I'm not a lawyer.
Be verified.
So you're saying...
So you're, yeah.
But the four fifths would, because you'd be required to abstain, correct?
Yeah.
Well, I, I would be abstaining anyway, I mean, so I guess, yeah, it ends up being unanimous anyway at that point.
That's to appoint you, but if you're not being appointed...
Then it wouldn't.
Then it doesn't, doesn't make any difference. And basically, it'd be, I know, I know it's the situation, but according to Roberts rules of order, if the person, whoever's going to abstain, has to refrain from any discussion also, which we've already broke that rule, but...
Well, I just wanted to clarify.
I know.
People understood.
Okay, and I, note taken, so. Do I have a motion to approve the appointments that I presented, or does the council want to make changes?
I appreciate the points in the discussion, but I do agree with mayor that maybe it's an opportunity for someone else to have input on a board that has not been given the opportunity previously. Change can be hard, but I think sometimes it's, it's good. So I would make a motion to approve those positions as you presented them.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Joe, a second, okay. Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries, four in favor, none against, one abstention. Thank you. Seven N, approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash one twelve, appointing election judges.
So we will be having three elections in, in two thousand twenty, March, August and November this year, with the March third being the first ever presidential primary in Minnesota. So we now are beginning to appoint and train election judges and election judge training starts on January sixth, so we gotta get rolling on that. I do have a list of election judges that have agreed to serve next year, I do need to cross one off of this list. So the election judges we're requesting to be appointed are Diane Basil, Wendy Drabney, Sandrine Fredericks, Jacqueline Croft, Melissa Kleinschmidt, Roberta Olson, Marilyn Schwegman, Amy Trisco, Nicole Vogt and myself. So we are looking to approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash one twelve, appointing election judges for two thousand twenty.
Questions, comments, did you miss Alice Peters?
Yes.
I, I intentionally did, because she's not going to be able to serve.
Oh, okay, all right. Do I have a motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash one twelve, appointing the election judges for two thousand twenty?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi? Too fighting. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven O, approve change order, two thousand eighteen North Project.
This is change order number three for the project, it includes topsoil amendment applications for the spring of two thousand twenty for the agreement we made in a zero cost to the city. Chuck Bozer was here a couple meetings ago and explained to you what that would look like. It includes an extension, also includes an extension of the final completion date to October ninth of two thousand twenty, so that we can have a good season for inspection for the results of the topsoil amendments. And then I did include the change order form in there for you to see what it is that they are planning to do. And so we're looking to approve change order number three.
Questions, comments? As you can see, the dollar figure on that change order is zero, because that is to make up for some of the seating. So do I have a motion to approve change order number three?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven P, approve pay application number fourteen, Brightbach.
We have pay request fourteen, that's for a total amount of sixty-five thousand nine sixty-four oh four. We have a subtotal of work that has been earned to date of two million nine seventy-seven oh ninety-eight-ten. We have paid out two, two million seven ninety-one two thirty-five fourteen, after deduct retained, that ends with the sixty-five thousand dollar number that I quoted you. So we are looking to approve pay request number fourteen to Brightbach Construction, sixty-five thousand nine sixty-four oh four.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve the pay request number fourteen?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven Q, approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash one thirteen, approving the application of Crazy Jays Bar and Grill LLC, doing business as Crazy Jays Bar and Grill for a transfer of on-sale, off-sale, Sunday and two AM liquor license located at five twenty Sinclair Lewis Avenue.
You just gave the staff report. So this application is for a transfer and we have received all the documentation and we did have a verbal, like the insurance has been issued. The effective date of the transfer would be as soon as the state turns it around, but it is their intent to be open later in January. So this will be the American tap and eatery that was previously the Palace will now become Crazy Jays. So we are looking for approving resolution two thousand nineteen dash one thirteen, approving the application of Crazy Jays Bar and Grill for a transfer of on-sale, off-sale, Sunday and two AM liquor license at five twenty Sinclair Lewis Avenue.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash one thirteen?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave.
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Any other comments? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven R, approve cigarette license application.
This is the cigarette license also for Crazy Jays Bar and Grill at the, at the five twenty Sinclair Lewis Avenue. We're just approving the request for a cigarette, cigarette license to be issued to Crazy Jays, doing business as Crazy Jays Bar and Grill. So it's the same location.
Do I have a motion to approve that request?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven S, approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash one-fifteen, authorizing sale of excess vehicle.
We do have the one vehicle that a couple of meetings ago you approved we offered for sale, it's a two thousand Chevrolet Camaro. It has been sold for one thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars to Kipton Auto Sales. We're requesting to approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash one-fifteen, authorizing the sale.
Questions, comments?
That was a convertible, I'm surprised it went so low.
Approved res, do we have a motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash one-fifteen?
Motion to approve. I'll second it.
Motion by Diane, second by Joe, that's how I heard it.
Okay.
Call the question, all those in favor, signify with say and aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven T, approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash one-sixteen, delegating poll place.
Minnesota statute two oh four B subdivision one requires that the city council by ordinance or resolution delegates opposing, uh, polling places for the upcoming year. This prevents changes to polling places less than ninety days prior to an election unless it becomes available, unavailable due to an emergency. The attached resolution designates Sox Center City Hall as the official polling place for special and general elections for two thousand twenty. The three elections currently scheduled are March third, August eleventh, and November third. So we are requesting that be approved by resolution two thousand nineteen dash one-sixteen, designating polling place.
Questions? Do I have a motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash one-sixteen?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor, signify with say and aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven U, another liquor license transfer.
So this, this is a, a new item, a new ad that you added earlier today, and this is a request for a transfer of a liquor license. The one is that currently at Elmer's at twelve-twenty-five Timber Lane Drive, and American Tap and Eatery is requesting that transfer. So we have received the application, the hundred dollar transfer fee, the license fee, and the workers' compensation documents. Uh, the liquor liability insurance, I understand that it is being requested, but the insurance agent is, just started working on it yesterday, so I don't know what her timeline for that will be. And so, uh, I would have resolution two thousand nineteen dash one-seventeen, approving the application of Seed Entertainment LLC, doing business as American Tap and Eatery, for a transfer of an on-sale and Sunday liquor license at twelve-twenty-five Timber Lane Drive. And I understand it's their intent to be open in a very short period of time, however, that's out of our control, because we mail these to the state, and they have up to thirty days to issue, and it's the Christmas season, and a lot of cities do all their liquor licenses on January first. So there is no guarantee that the transfer would go through at the state level if you send it on there. And, and if you do, uh, we can't send it until we have a copy of the, of the insurance document to in, to include with the mailing. So if you want to approve it pending receiving that, so we can send it on, or if you prefer to wait and table it till the next meeting, that's your second option.
Council's wishes?
I guess I would think that if we approve it contingent upon receipt, that we wanted it, if it is received, we can forward on versus waiting to the next council meeting. So I'd make a motion to approve the transfer contingent upon the receipt of the insurance.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Joe, second by Diane. Uh, when we receive everything, that's when we'll send it into the state. Is there a resolution?
Uh, one-nineteen.
One-nineteen.
Or maybe I said one, yeah, one-seventeen, I'm sorry.
One-seventeen, okay. Any other questions? Call the question, all those in favor, signify with say and aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Unfinished business, two thousand twenty projects report.
Uh, the city engineer just provided me with a brief information, a couple of the items you've already taken care of, which is change order number three and pay request number fourteen, uh, for Brightback. Uh, they have, uh, the, the, on the two, two thousand twenty CIP, the preliminary assessments for mailing are being worked on right now. We're supposed to have them here by Friday, so we can mail them out next week, Merry Christmas. And, uh, then they've been doing the surveying of the project area, and they, if you've been out there, you'll see that the survey crews have been out there, uh, doing their surveying. And then we received two quotes from testing companies for the soil borings report for Tenth Street and the arena parking lot. Independent testing for four thousand eight hundred and ten, and Braun Intertek quote for eight thousand four fifty-five. And we already have an agreement with, uh, inter, independent testing, because they did our other projects, so we're just continuing on with that as the low, the low quote. So the project continues to move forward. Now, we expect to have the public hearing on January fifteenth, and at that point, then you'll be able to decide whether we're going to proceed with this project, so.
Anyone have any questions?
No.
Okay, we have no new business, that brings us to the consent agenda. We have a schedule of claims, unpaid claims of a hundred and nineteen thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty cents. Paid claims of twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars, for a total of one forty-seven, three sixty-five, forty. We have November checks, paid claims slash payroll of five hundred and eleven thousand five hundred and five dollars and twenty-nine cents. We have resolution two thousand nineteen dash one-fourteen, accepting contributions of five hundred dollars from Sterns Electric Association to be allocated to the ambulance department. Eight hundred dollars from Community Connections to be allocated to outdoor skating rink, and three thousand dollars from the Sox Center seniors to be allocated to the senior center. And on behalf of the city and the council, I want to thank those people or groups for their contributions. Uh, we have a request from James Metcalf, representing the American Legion Post sixty-seven, an application and permit for a one-day temporary on-sale liquor license during the Snowdown Racing Festival on December twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen. Um, the fee and certificate of insurance are being provided. And we also have another request from the American Legion Post sixty-seven for a one-day temporary on-sale liquor license during the Snowdown Racing Festival on January fourth. And the fee and certificate of insurance are being provided also. Is there any questions about the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor, signify with say and aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Informational items.
Just a couple of information items, the, the campground online reservation software has been completed. Um, we're going actually live on Monday, December twenty-third, rather than January second. So, uh, we did send out emails and postcards to anybody that camped here in two thousand nineteen, so they should be aware of it, and you'll be able to access it straight through our website. And also reminding the city council that the meeting in January will be actually Thursday, January second, rather than January first. And that's all I have.
Questions on the informational items?
I just have one question regarding that, um, campground go-live with the flyer that went out, it said, go live December twenty-third, and then the, I guess the tech world, a go-live would be like trialing the software. The what? Trialing the software, like you're going live with the software. You can make reservations on January, on December twenty-third. That's what I'm wondering, so it's, we don't have to wait until January anymore to. No, December twenty-third is when it's going to go live, yeah.
One other question that I had on that is what time is that going live? Is it at midnight, or is it at eight o'clock in the morning on the twenty-third?
It's when we come to work that morning, I don't think we're going to come in at midnight and turn it on.
I didn't think so, but that was one of the questions that I had asked of.
Oh, I suppose there'll be people up all night, pushing the, looking for the button.
Well, they sit.
They do that with the state.
They, they sit outside at three in the morning, so I figured, well. Any other questions? That brings us to the end of our agenda, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Joe, second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor, signify with say and aye.
Aye.
Opposed, meeting adjourned.